Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Farmington School Board meeting for March 21st, 2016. At this time, I ask that you all please rise and make the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Shaggin, for your willingness to chair the board.
Thank you. Before we begin with the agenda, I would like to officially congratulate Ms. Angie Cardinal on her recent school board victory and welcome her officially to the board.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'm going to call for public participation. Let me let you know.
We should do a vice chair at this time.
I was kind of thinking we could go back to reorganization later on in the agenda. Is that okay?
Well, I mean, it's in case you keel over, we'll have somebody do it.
Not planning to, but you never know. Okay, nominations for vice chair.
I'll stay with it if everybody's willing for me to stay with it.
Anyone else? Penny will stay on as vice chair.
Don't feel we have to keel over, Pen.
What I would ask, I see there's a lot of members of the public here tonight that obviously want to speak about a particular issue. What I would ask is that you identify yourself when you get up to the microphone. You will speak from the microphone, not so that we can hear you, so that people at home can hear you, because a lot of people watch online and view from Channel 25. So, I'd ask that you state your name for the record, and then you can say your piece, okay? So, any public participation at this time? You've got applause, and you haven't said anything yet. That's good.
I'm pretty special. I think they know I was practicing for the mic. So, hello, my name is May Cartier, and as you may be aware, I am here about the football coach position and the contract. Obviously, we're here, when I was here at the last meeting, the information that I received was essentially that there was no action taken on the football coaches' contract. And doing some further research, I found out that I can ask that that be reconsidered, so the coach's nomination, the head football coach's contract can be, asking the board to reconsider. I would like to say that the Booster Club, so the football Booster Club, took it upon themselves to write a letter, reach out to both the students and parents, and ask them to come to support or express their opinion in any way that they have. Part of this came from, and again, I'm not sure why the board made the decision that they made last time. I heard rumors, and so I do not want to further those rumors. So, I've come to read some reflection about the Booster Club and what we've heard from certain people, and just to then express my opinion. In a letter that we wrote, we, as parents, but again, from the Booster Club, asked that people come and support or express their opinion. Mr. Zendry, Andrew, the head coach who was hired last year, we felt that he created an environment of discipline, hard work, and pride during the summer and long before the season began. As many of you may know, it was late getting a coach last year. My son, I know for sure, was concerned about what that would mean for the team as a whole.
Can I interrupt you for one moment, and I apologize?
Sure.
I did notice Coach Zendry's present.
Yeah.
I want to ask you, sir, if the comments made tonight are okay with you being said in public?
All comments said tonight are okay in public.
Okay. That's, you're right, because it is a personnel matter to have it in non-public, which you could invite people to non-public, but you're okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, continue, sorry.
No, that's fine. So, Coach Zendry was hired sort of at the end of the game, if you will, right before the summer. He did take it upon himself to quickly come up to speed, make sure he understood what he was working with in terms of a team. He came to progressive training sessions just to see the students. One of the biggest things from the year prior was that we had, did not have enough kids to have two teams, a JV and a varsity team. A lot of our children were hurt. They weren't conditioned. So, he really worked with the students and encouraged them to talk to their friends, to talk about the positive atmosphere that he wanted to create going into this year, and that if we had belief in ourselves and worked together as a team, that we could win. And in fact, we did win. We won three games, and I'm pretty sure it's the most winningest record ever in football. I don't know for sure, because I haven't scoured all the winning records, but we were very pleased, moreover, we were very pleased that we were able to have both a JV and a varsity team. Again, we believe that Andrew did create a positive environment, and he has continued to do so in the school system, encouraging kids. He then took it upon himself to work with the local Y to get the students half-price so that they could become members and work out. He takes time, at least three days a week, he and the other coaches volunteer their time to be there with the students, to encourage them, to give them advice about conditioning, as well as he's encouraged a lot of those students to continue to condition. I know my son goes at five in the morning several days a week, and that's quite a feat, I have to say. So, again, I believe that his contract was put forward by the principal and the superintendent. And again, I'm not sure why his contract was not considered by the board, and what I heard last time was that you made a different decision. It was a personnel decision. I will say for myself personally, there have been a couple of instances, as a mother bear, that I was concerned about what happened with my son, and I went to Coach Zendry and expressed my concerns, and we talked, and we were respectful of each other, and we came out on the other side. And clearly, I'm here supporting him and have taken up this charge and asked others to come as well. The other item, I will just say again, I don't know if there was some gossip, but I believe somebody said that there was a formal complaint filed against the coach from another school. I do have the record here showing that that is not true. There was not a complaint formally filed. And in fact, from Division III football and the other sports, these ratings talk about if there were complaints or where you are, and Farmington knew it was third on the list in terms of how they did. I think reflection, I don't know everything about that. We also have some students that would like to just talk about the influence that he's had. Noah?
All right, I'm Noah Vanderboot, and I'm the only returning captain on the football team. And I just want to go out and say, through my entire high school career, whether it's been baseball or football, the coaches, the coaching staff that we've had this year have done so much, whether it's in the season or offseason, helping out with working out, getting people in condition to prevent injuries for the next season, or helping out in school, or even just trying to get kids on through high school and maybe even to college. And I know they've been helping me, talking to me about possibly going to college, seeing if I could possibly play football, and I know that they've been talking to other students too, and I think that that's a really good reason to reconsider hiring them for the head coach position.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Chase. I am, next year will be my senior year of football. Out of my four years I've played, we have won a combined seven games, last year being the most winningest season ever. Last year was definitely a lot better for me, mostly because of the coaching staff. My freshman and sophomore year, I wasn't always physically fit. I wasn't the smartest kid in school, and last year that changed. They pushed me more in practice, they pushed me more in school, my academic grades went up, and my physical fitness went up. I felt smarter, I felt better about myself, I felt a lot stronger. And I feel like I say that for the whole team. We definitely improved a lot, and I think that's thanks in part to the coaches. We were a better team, we were there for each other, in school and out of school. We were a stronger unit, we were like brothers, and I truly mean that. I love football now. My freshman year was my first year playing, and I fell in love with it, and it's mostly because of the atmosphere and how my teammates treated me, and last year just put it all together because of the coaching staff. I just think having that as a coaching staff and having that atmosphere and a team is what we should really look for, and I think that should be a good reason why we bring them back.
Thank you, Chase.
I've been a football mom for the past 13 years, six years part of the high school team, and I will tell you that this is, this past season is the first year that I was proud to be a parent of the Farmington Football Team. In years past, they weren't a team. They were players that went out individually and played. There was coaches that coached certain kids, mine were not included in them. This year, I was proud to be on the sideline of that team. My youngest is a freshman on the team, and all of these boys as upperclassmen are friends to him. That's an amazing feat. I watched those boys from the very first practice trying to run up the hill and cheer each other on, and every one of them, including Chase, made it to the top. It took them a little longer, but he made it, and by the end of the season, he was running up that hill with no problem. They laughed, they cheered, they, if you had ever gone to practices, they were always together cheering each other on, never giving up. It's not really about winning, I think, it's more about that sense of team, the sense of fairness, discipline, I talked about discipline. The same rules apply for every player. So, one player wasn't allowed to skip three practices and still start in the game. If you skipped practice, which I don't think happened, you didn't play. If you were sick and you couldn't come back and play so many games, you know, so many practices before a game, you didn't play. I stupidly planned vacation during football. My son had to sit out of a game, and even though we knew that he was going to miss that way back when we started in August, and he sat on the sideline and he cheered his team on and had no problem doing that, because he knew it was fair across the board, that the same rules applied to everybody. Everybody shows up to practice on time? Nope, 45 minutes early, because practice starts at 3:30, but every kid's there at quarter or three, ready to go. Every kid stays there later and works and works together. It was a huge thing. Coach Zendry and the whole coaching staff, it's amazing to me. I had just found out a couple of weeks ago that they weren't being welcomed back, and I was kind of surprised. Even more surprised that I was told that they were told they weren't coming back, yet they've still been at the Y, working with those boys. That's dedication. That's a coach who cares about his kids, who cares that they're fit, that they can last a whole game and not get hurt. I don't know what the ratio to injuries this year was compared to the past, but I know in the past, kids have been sitting on the sideline hurt and not being able to play forever, you know, for three and six games, because they've been hurt. This year, we didn't have half as many injuries. And if they were injured, they didn't come back till they were cleared. So, my own son ended up going out on a concussion. He did not go back onto that field until he was medically cleared. That, I will tell you honestly, did not happen in the past. Whether or not it was supposed to, I don't know. But they made sure that kids were safe, kids were doing well in school, kids were conditioned. They lasted the whole game. If any of you ever went to a football game two years ago, they did really great the first quarter, half of the second quarter, and then they petered out, and then you only had the ones that were really in shape to make it the rest. If you went to any of their games this year, all the boys made it the whole game and could still run off the field at the end. That's, that is a huge feat for them. I ask you to reconsider and renew their, Coach Zendry's position as the head coach for next year.
Anyone else from the public want to speak about a different issue other than, yes? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see ya.
Take a word on this as well. My name's Matt Roy. My son Paul's been playing football since midget at nine years old. I have had somewhat of a different experience with this year's, last year's team and coaching staff. I saw a lot of injuries. I think we were ill-prepared in our training for proper tackling. There's training out there that we did not have. I think there was behavioral issues exhibited in coaching that I don't find acceptable. I think there were, I think there were complaints lodged with the athletic director. Don't know if they ever made it where they were going to go. I know that, because I was one of the, one of the parents talking about it. There was Booster Club equipment that was broken upon first game. A lot of kids didn't finish a game. My son played with a broken arm for a short time, took himself out. I know they came in, the coaches came in, you know, in a short, you know, short prep for the season, but still, I think a lot of language could have been a lot better handled from coaching and with kids on the field. I've been an athlete my entire life, and I've had a lot of different kinds of coaches, a lot of different tolerance levels of what is expected from students and athletes, and I, I think if you guys have made a decision and the position is open, I'm not sure if this is where it's left right now, it's open to be, it's open to the public, and he can reapply, they can reapply, that's fine. But I think that's exactly, if you've already, if you've already done that, you should go through with it.
Okay, as long as we're not, because what we're not going to do is go back and forth with other members.
Not at all. I just wanted to say two things, because I am a part of the Booster Club. We did purchase equipment. The equipment was not broken. And agreeably, it was thrown on the field, we had a conversation with the coach, and that did not happen again. And that's all I wanted to say, was the equipment was not broken. Again, I understand your opinion, and we all have our opinion, and I appreciate it. I wanted to make that note clear. I also wanted to make clear, when I said that there was no complaints lodged, I was talking about from another school. The gossip that I had heard was that somebody had indicated that a complaint was made from another school, and that was not true. So, I was not talking about any parent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vittorioso. I had, I had recognized you earlier.
Sorry. I'm not talking about football.
Okay. Bobby did?
I was having to say.
Sure, go ahead.
My name's Elijah Shereco.
Speak up, because we can't, I can't.
Just a little louder, Eli.
You don't have to speak into the microphone, you just need to elevate your voice.
That's for the folks at home.
My name's Elijah Shereco. Out of the years that I've played sports, not just football, I've played basketball, baseball, football. Out of the coaches that I've had, these coaches this year, I have to say, were by far the best coaches that I've had in my life. They actually listened to us, they helped us. I have like a certain feeling where I can tell if I like a person just by meeting them once or twice. And when I first met the coaches, I sensed that I really had a connection with the head coach. He, he so far has helped me in school, and.
Thanks, bud. Thanks, guys.
Get your penny on. Good job.
I guess, as a parent, it's not, it's my view that it's not the coach's job to parent my kids, it's not their job to sugarcoat the world for them. It's their job to teach them football and to teach them perseverance, not give up, sportsmanship. On the sidelines of those games this year, I was so proud of these boys. I'd never seen sportsmanship before like that. And it's not from years past, it's because of these coaches, the commitment they put in. I think your answer to your question, should we rehire this coach, is right here.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Vittorioso. I had written a letter within the last week to each one of the board members. Thank you, Mrs. Moran, for responding. I was curious about, I, she was the only one that responded, and she said that it would be talked about today, and asked for it to be on the agenda, and it's not. So, I just wanted to bring up a couple of points about, I'm going to start with Parent Teacher Conference Day. So, I have three kids, two at Valley View and one at Henry Wilson, and I know that April 1st, I think it is, I can't even remember, is scheduled Parent Teacher Conference Day, so there's no school. So, my two students who attend Valley View, their conferences are all set up, I got everyone in daycare for the day, and then I contacted my son's teacher at Henry Wilson, and she said that she has professional development obligations that day, so she will not be able to attend, have a parent-teacher conference that day. She was very accommodating and said she could do another day. I'm not trying to blame this on the teacher in any way. I was just curious as to what the policy was and as to why. It was my understanding that that is a Parent Teacher Conference Day where there is no school for children in the district. So, in order for me to have a conference with my child at Henry Wilson, I have to take an additional day off of work, an additional time, and want to be involved, and I was curious as to the policy and as to the reasoning behind this.
Having received your email, your letter, it was my intention to bring it up tonight under, at the, towards the end of the meeting, when we have that time when we can talk about old and new business.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, that's a conversation that we have to have. Typically, Parent Teacher Conference structure has looked very different at the three different buildings. I'm not sure it has to look as different as it does, but we probably going to have that, at least a brief conversation about this before we end our public meeting tonight.
Okay.
So, it is going to be addressed to some extent tonight.
Can I just add on to that or ask a question regarding? Laura mentioned that she has to take a day off from work. I've been a teacher for seven years, and we've always had night conferences available, and I know that Farmington did it one year, and it was great. My question is, why do they not do evening conferences for parents who can't take a day off from work and still want to stay connected to their child and their school?
And it's another, it's another good point that we can certainly discuss when we, when we have this conversation later in the night. You may see it as an agenda item here in the future too, if we can't get through all of it tonight.
But as of now, this is.
I would suspect that Dr. Pfeiffer would have to talk with some of the leadership in the buildings to sort of get a sense of where everybody's at with how they structure them.
My other question's concerned, the last school board meeting, I wasn't able to attend, so I watched on television, and at that time, Dr. Pfeiffer brought up two names that are going to be the principal and the vice principal at Henry Wilson Memorial School. I, as it said, as it was stated in my letter, I was concerned first about why there wasn't protocol followed when we have interviews and interview committees. In the past, there have been parents, teachers, administrators, that have been on committees to find those positions. I was concerned as to why parents were not aware that that position was even open. I understand that the principal there had left, which is of her own doing, but I didn't understand why there was a lack of communication with parents as to there was no leader at Henry Wilson. And to me, as a parent, that is very concerning. We had a bomb threat at Farmington High School. God forbid that happens at Henry Wilson, but you had no leader. You had interims, yes, and I do understand that those interims were people from Valley View and from the high school who did service in Mrs. Cynthia Sparks, I get to see a lot. But I was also concerned as to why those interims were not considered for the new positions. I know that the two candidates that have been brought forth have no administrative experience, they both are coming out of the classroom, which I think should be considered if you're coming into a district, you've, as part of your qualifications, especially in a time that we've gone through so many administrative positions at Henry Wilson. I was also concerned as to why that all of a sudden it's, the majority of the year at Henry Wilson has been one principal, and the interim principal was vacant, the vice principal. Now, all of a sudden, we have two principal positions at Henry Wilson and only one at Valley View for next year. To me, there, yes, there are more students at Henry Wilson, but there is not many more students, I think it's 15 or 20, I would have to check the numbers. And you're implementing full-day kindergarten at Valley View next year. So, it is my personal opinion, I don't know how everyone feels about this, that maybe that other administrator would split between the buildings. I don't understand why, it was just a big shift, and I didn't know if that could be addressed, or what the policy was, or why these decisions were made.
Anything you want to address? You want me to? Okay. I can, I can say this. First of all, I don't know where the information's coming out, but there's no assistant principal at Valley View next year. I will once again say that just because an assistant principal position was cut from the budget, doesn't mean that Valley View won't see an assistant principal at least part of a day next year. You know, that's a decision that the administrative team needs to make. I've been very vocal about the fact that I think that administrators can be shared amongst buildings. Other small districts do it, and it works out quite well. But that's something that still has to be decided.
Okay, it just says in the budget, it's bottom lined out at Valley View. That's. We had to take it out of line.
Had to come out of some line, I'm sure, but.
But the decision.
How it's, how it's organized, you know, structurally organized next year really hasn't been determined yet.
Well, you just hired somebody. Isn't that? We hired an interim. You hired interim. We hired an interim. From now until? June. Okay.
These positions, we had a principal, we did not have a vice principal, for whatever reason, that some, for some reason, whatever structure was in place to pick one, they couldn't come to a decision. As soon as Dr. Pfeiffer came on board, the board had made it very clear that this was top priority, we wanted to move fairly quickly to get something in place for the rest of the year. And that's all it is, is for the rest of the year.
Of both of those positions, for the rest of the year?
That is correct.
Okay.
Both are interim positions.
Okay.
So, we've secured leadership for that building for the rest of the year.
Okay. I guess my question to that is, then, why don't the parents know that? Why isn't there a letter that says, okay, we've gone through a transitional switch? As a parent who's involved, and only has one child there now, but in the future will have two.
Right. I know a statement was made at the last board meeting. Dr. Pfeiffer, any particular reason why we haven't sent out correspondence yet?
One, we haven't known when they will be aboard.
Okay.
They have to be released from their contracts in other school districts. One will, as of today, be joining us Monday. We also have a school nurse who joined us today, and the other individual will be joining us as soon as he's released by his superintendent. Just wanted to say one thing. Just wanted to say one thing. There were, on the interview committee, staff, students, and a parent that interviewed the group and made recommendation to us. I forward those to the board. The board interviewed the candidates. Our situation during that period of time changed. Principal was not able to continue, and, um, so we have done our best in a bad situation to cover Henry Wilson and to, I publicly did this last Wednesday, but publicly again. I will thank the staff who have more than risen to the occasion and covered this need, whether it be nursing or it be leadership and management. We're working day by day to get to where we want to be.
So since those positions are both interims, are you planning to reopen them for the next school year?
I think both of those individuals are entitled to evaluation in their positions before that decision is made.
Well, interim is interim, right? So their contract only goes to the 30th, so don't you need to, regardless, isn't it legally that you have to make that position public?
I would say yes, but I will tell you that if we're happy with the leadership and things are going in a positive direction, you know, it, of course, it will follow the legal posting that we need to do, but if we're, if we're happy with the leadership direction, we probably will stay there.
Okay. Thank you.
And just one little note. Good administrators come from the classroom.
Yes.
I know, I know that they don't have previous experience, but we've got some wonderful administrators that are still with this district and have retired successfully from this district. They came right from the classroom that didn't have previous administrative experience. So, so I don't want people to think they can't be good because they, they don't have it, you know?
Right, but you had candidates within, I guess was my concern.
That didn't apply, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Petrie.
Yeah, I just wanna make it, uh, clear that, uh, when you contact a school district, you contact through the superintendent. And, uh, we really shouldn't be, uh, debating things on the outside with parents. And that's, that's very important. There's, there's an organization here, and if we don't follow that, then it's chaos because everybody's got their own opinion on this board. And we have to work as a board. If that doesn't happen, we're in big trouble. So.
Ms. Cardinal.
Just, uh, a thought on, you know, how we have our next fiscal year's budget has a bit of placeholders going on in there. That's gonna drive real activity, real behaviors, real decisions. I think we have to put some urgency on, kind of solidifying what those placeholders really mean for the next school year, um, 'cause we could lose some talented employees because they're not sure if they're gonna have a spot here next year.
We're doing professional negotiations tonight in a non-public session because it's personnel. That's the start. The second part is to do the support staff. The board had asked for this before April, so tonight I'm presenting it to you on the professionals.
All right, I'm gonna close public participation. We've gone about, um, 20 minutes over from what we normally do. I am gonna say this, I know a lot of you here for a particular issue. When, when, uh, the coaching position is addressed, it'll be addressed in a non-public session because that's what we do for resignations and nominations in a non-public session. So you won't see any action for the rest of this evening publicly. So if you, if you wanna stay for the board meeting, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our agenda, but I just wanted you to know that there's nothing in particular to stick around for. We will be addressing it, I will assure you of that.
May I make an excuse to just go?
To the sports venue, but, yeah. You know that, that Mrs. Moore, excuse yourself a little bit.
I'll leave. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
You normally have a day.
Okay, approval of minutes. Uh, March 7th, public session. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
So move by Mr. Petrie, second vice, Mr. Frida. Any corrections? Anything we need to change? Um, I'll bring us to page seven. Middle of the page, it's really the fourth paragraph down, just a small typo. Mr. Gezokas said that, that on, it should say on instead of one. Get that? And in the last paragraph, uh, second, second line, it's referred to as the NHIA. It's actually the NHIAA.
Yeah, it is.
Which is the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association, so we just have to add an A to that. Any other?
Well, I, I just had a procedural thing, uh, on this Google Docs. They should have, uh, I don't know if there is a capability, but, uh, to try to edit from and highlight the, uh, you know, like that error there, NHIAA. I did notice that. But, uh, try to adjust it.
You're saying edit it as we receive it, that we have?
Well, if you, if you have an error, then have some way to, uh, highlight it, and that way, you know, you can see it, and obviously it's an error, so you'll pick it up when you do it at the meeting. But right now, you can't.
Is that possible, Stan?
You, you would have to save it not as a PDF, but as an editable document. Um, and then you could make it available for us and gorgeously comment to. So instead of being able to fix it, you can comment, this needs an A. And then you, you wouldn't have to go through that stuff here, so we can, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Point. Anything else in the public minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Mrs. Cardinal wasn't yet on the board?
He was here.
I wasn't here for the re-entry to public at the end.
March 7th, non-public session one. Do you hear a motion?
Yeah, Angie just made it.
No, Angie made a motion.
Waited.
She can do that. Hey, I heard you.
Is there a second? Stand. Um, I would just point out again, NHIAA in the, in the bottom paragraph, it's in the first sentence of the bottom paragraph. Any other errors or omissions?
I'm sorry, is this the second one?
Nothing else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? March 7th, non-public two. Motion? Joe? Second by Stan. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Non-public session three. Motion? Stan? Second? Joe? Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
I'm going to, uh, how about if we just go back to the school board reorganization when Penny returns?
Special order.
Special order.
Without redaction.
Thank you. Uh, award of smart board bid.
I'm doing notes and, uh, maybe minutes, so let's see. Included in your packet. Smart board bid. We still have some federal grant monies available, um, and, um, both Cynthia, Rick Bailey, our IT director, and I worked on soliciting, um, a rebid of smart boards, which would be the same equipment, same exact equipment that we purchased last spring. Um, and we sent it out to six companies, um, and actually, we only received one bid back from CCS Presentation Systems out of Nashua. Um, as I reached out to the companies and asked, you know, why they didn't submit a bid, and it's simply because it is for smart board brand, but as we went through and looked at what the pricing was for what we received last year, uh, May 2015, CCS is still honoring those prices. And what they've done is they've put it in writing and have attached it to, uh, my cover memo. Um, so what it will be is a pack, a total package cost, and this is for the boards, projection systems, brackets, and cabling, shipping, and installation is $8,390.30. And we are requesting that you approve to continue with this purchase.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Motion to approve by Mr. Petrie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Any discussion?
Yeah, where's this going?
Okay, so the location, the location is.
And where's?
It's been written into the grant, right?
It's been written into the Henry Wilson.
Okay, it's Henry Wilson.
One is for the foreign language room, which did not receive one last year. There are three other spaces that are currently being used for a variety of special education classes right now. In the fall, there was conversation with the then administration in the building. Before we make a final determination where that one other one is going, I'd like to get the new administration on board and get their recommendation.
And where, uh, how many classrooms are missing smart boards now?
Currently, I don't have it off the top of my head. I wanna say in the 20 to 25 range. We bought quite a few last year.
Oh, we're pretty, pretty good shape for our smart boards.
Could we get Rick to provide us a report?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Um, the pricing for the accessories, shipping and handing and installation, is that also consistent with the previous bid?
Yeah, yes, it is. Yeah.
Thank you.
What we did was we took and we, we took the documents and basically bumped them side by side to see, you know, what was the difference is.
Is it something that can wait till public?
He asked how many rooms were missing boards?
Can you, can you, all right, so if it's a question, can you go to the mic? Sorry, I'm gonna be real strict about this stuff.
Now, Joe asked how many rooms were missing boards, and he answered it was 25 rooms don't have boards?
No, 25.
No, that was 25 that.
That do have boards. Okay. You asked how many were missing though, right, Joe? How many didn't have boards?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm curious about the answer to that one. It was just four or five boards that the grant covers. I lost count there.
It's like two boards.
Two boards.
Two.
Oh, it's only two.
We're only purchasing two.
Okay.
And they will be at Henry Wilson.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll get your report on density in every building.
Any other?
It seems, it seems very high for a smart board. Usually, with modern boards, the, the projection system comes with them, so we're paying equal for the projection system as we are for the board. I just think that's kinda high.
Are these smart boards versus Eno boards?
These are smart board brand.
Okay.
With, um, right.
Did we, did we only price out smart board brand?
Yes. Yes, 'cause we wanted to stay consistent with what our other inventory is, and we just went through training sessions, and, um, that piece is also included in the grant. Um, so we didn't wanna be bringing in another type of equipment and then have another learning curve, and you end up losing that flexibility, I guess, when you have a teacher moving from a different classroom to a different classroom, so.
You do have some insight as far as the brand.
Yeah.
Branding goes. Several teachers have told me that as far as free software and free applications that you can download for your smart boards as you start to use them.
Mm-hmm.
It is specific to the smart board brand.
Brand, right.
So when you go with an off-brand, you end up having to pay for applications and software as you get more proficient with the boards. So you save on that.
Yeah, as, uh, Promethean gives free software for their boards too, so it depends on the board you get.
Mr. Petrie?
Right, uh, if you remember, we started, uh, well, Penny probably remembers, uh, the cost was 2,500, so that, they've actually gone down in price about $800. So that's when we first started inquiring about smart boards.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second.
How often do the children use these boards?
This is more of a, I mean, on the classroom, so.
I was gonna say, I've seen them in use. It, it depends on the classroom, depends on the teacher.
We had a group of students last year, was it last year they came? And we went down with, uh, and they gave a whole demonstration on how they use the smart boards and the special ed team. Yeah, yeah, so I think they, the kids interact with the boards, and they, they probably teach the teachers how to use the boards.
This is a limited sample, but I did three observations, and they were used by teachers and staff in, at Henry Wilson.
And the students or just the teachers?
Yes, students and staff.
I'd rather spend $8,000 on, um, handhelds for the kids. A lot more modern.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's, let's go back to school board reorganization.
I wrote you a list.
I held off. Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask if there was a cheat sheet. Usually, there's a cheat sheet.
Yeah, we treasure it.
I don't have that. I think, I, I think that's coming up later in one of our things to nominate Mary Farron as president.
Yeah, we do have that on our agenda. Um, okay.
What, is that first? Do you want my cheat sheet? I think I have.
We'll do the cheat sheet. I'm gonna recognize Mrs. Cardinal.
Um, so we've, um, elected a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and I saw in our policies that we also have a board secretary. I haven't, through minutes, years past, I haven't seen us actually put one in.
We don't, we haven't figured out what a secretary does.
The only, the only thing we ever used the secretary for was when there was a convention in Farmington, and the secretaries would get the prospective, um, votes for the towns.
Yeah, that's, matter of fact, that's the, that's a statutory requirement. And that's no longer a requirement.
Okay. Well, it's still in our policy, and it says a secretary shall be responsible for board correspondence when directed by the chairperson. So it's pretty broad, but I think we have an opportunity here, um, where we, in next year's school budget, we've taken and cut out the assistant to the superintendent, and that's currently the person that prepares our agendas for our board meetings, correct?
Yes.
And coordinates all of that. So perhaps we should have a secretary for the board, and then that's one duty that we would know is still gonna continue on and be done by a secretary on the board.
Yeah, that's.
Are you volunteering for that position?
Uh, yeah, I do it. If, if we think we want one. I mean, it's in the policy and.
Well, it'd also be, um, you know, at times when we, we've had no, no record keeper.
Right.
You know, we've had volunteers, that would be something that would, I would think would fall on a secretary.
Yeah. That would be okay.
She's doing a good job over there.
I don't know if it's super.
All right.
Uh, so it's something that we could go back and restructure the responsibilities of that individual if we wanna put one together.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll nominate Angie to be the secretary.
Okay, Angie's nominated?
Same.
All those in favor? All right. All right. Representative to the Budget Committee.
Stan, how do you feel about?
Stan, Stan, good job.
Uh, I don't have a problem continuing if you would like me to represent you. I don't know if you've watched me at the Budget Committee or not, but if you would like me, I would have, be happy to do it.
All right, then I'll nominate Stan.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, sure.
All those in favor? Aye. Stan?
I'll be the alternate, just in case.
Yeah, and you don't have an alternate.
Yeah.
CIP, Joe?
Okay.
CIP, capital improvement plan?
Well, yeah, that's, that's a rule.
How about you for that, Joe?
Who's currently doing that?
I think, uh, the superintendent was.
It, it starts conflicting, so that's.
This is the school board's representative to the towns?
Yeah.
To the, to the, well, the CIP is, they, they, uh, make sure that we don't have big Well, the CIP is, they, they make sure that we don't have big things on this side of the house versus big things on the other side of the house.
Mr. Capello, are the CIP meetings still happening?
They will be happening again in the fall, once the budget season starts to pick up. And Joe was the school board rep.
For those of you who couldn't hear that at home, Mr. Capello, our town administrator is present. He was asked if they're happening and he said that they will continue in the fall. So, and Joe was the representative, but typically I think Mr., our former superintendent was going to the meetings, correct?
It was split.
Split, okay.
We do go to the budget committee, Lori and I, and I'm going to be a member for the safety committee. If a board member would like to attend, I welcome that. I was asked, so I volunteered.
Sure.
Joe, you're gonna be around for three years. Capital improvement plan, you could see it all.
Joe, you don't want, Joe, you don't want to do it?
Do you like to push everybody out?
Sometimes, you know, I, I don't know when you, when you get out of session sometimes. I mean, last week we didn't get out till, well, 10:30. I mean, you know, sometimes it just happens. So, you know, you have to forego.
I'll stay on that one.
Well, if it's not gonna reconvene till the fall, can we table this appointment?
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm making a motion that we table the appointment to the CIP.
Second, Penny?
Sure.
All in favor of tabling? Aye.
Professional development?
Professional development.
I don't think that we've even met on that committee. I've never been noticed. I'm, I'm the representative on the professional development. I don't get one notification of any professional development meetings. So is this a committee that we want to continue with? That we have a representative for?
I think it's kind of important, but did the committee meet and not contact us or did they not meet?
I don't know. Were there professional development committee meetings? Were there in the last year?
There hasn't been anybody from the school board in my, quite a few years' memory, meeting with the professional development committee.
Well, we have.
Did the committee meet?
Did we have the meetings?
Oh, meetings, oh, yes.
Okay, we've had, because we've had a representative. So the answer is they haven't been invited.
Haven't been invited or haven't been told them, so that may be the case, so.
Who's, who heads up the meetings?
At the moment, Stephanie had been doing it somewhat. The committee itself elects a chair. The chairperson has been one of the teachers at a Henry Wilson school, Pat Hutter. She has, in the meetings we've had this year, she is doing it this year, completing out the year. It was kind of a work together with Stephanie before and she, you're working with me, I worked with the team back in the spring. So between the two of us, we can notify whoever is the board rep when the meetings are.
I'll volunteer.
Yeah, I don't mind volunteering either, but you wanna stay with it?
No, no, I'd rather you stay with it. You've got the background for professional development, so. I'll nominate Joe.
Sure, okay. All in favor? Aye, okay.
We probably put these two together.
Yeah, we've got buildings and grounds. More specifically, we have, we do have that SAU space committee that was formed.
I've, I've been leading that. I don't mind staying. If anybody's good for that. Joe, you good to stay?
Yeah, I'll stay.
So you're looking to combine that with buildings and grounds? That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
And there were two of you on it, Joe and Penny.
Joe, Penny.
Is there a motion to have Joe and Penny stay? Okay, second? Second, all those in favor? Aye, okay.
We have Mary back in the treasurer and we'll do that.
We'll do that after.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. Mr. Freedom made the motion for Joel and Penny to stay.
No, Joe, Joe.
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 And Penny to stay on the buildings and grounds.
And Mrs. Cardinal's seconded it?
And the SAU space.
And we're gonna combine that with the SAU.
Yeah, I think that just makes sense now. And then if you want, I'll stay with Stratford Learning Center because they meet on Thursday mornings, so unless somebody.
I'm gonna fight for it.
I've, I've been on that one for the last eight, nine years, so.
Fine with me. Is there a motion for Penny to stay on that?
Sure.
So moved by Joe, seconded by Stan, all in favor? Aye.
That's all I could remember in mind. Does anybody know of any other committees that we have?
We can make them up as we go.
We can make them up, yeah.
There's some listed on the website, but I'm not sure if that's just not up to date.
What's listed there?
Have to come early and get online before you come. There's the health and wellness committee. I know that's, that's the, we don't have a representative on that. Actually. But actually.
We do.
You need to have, you do need to have a school board member.
Oh, my God.
Yes.
I'll volunteer for that.
You will? That would be.
Okay, good.
So moved.
So moved by Joe for Mrs. Cardinal, seconded by Stan. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Is there anything else on there that we didn't cover?
There's the curriculum and process, uh, policy.
Oh.
Subcommittees.
We've been doing policy at, at school board meetings. Do we want to just?
This is a policy committee.
Do we want to just keep going with that?
If you have all school board members making up that committee, then it counts as school board meetings, right?
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, even if there's two of us at a committee, if there's a committee meeting, it has to be posted, whether it is one of us, two of us. Any, anything has to be posted.
Any, any meeting or subcommittee meeting has to have minutes and it has to be posted. Period. That's what it says in 91A.
Curriculum?
I haven't been aware of a curriculum.
I don't think we've.
Well, we approve curriculum.
You approve the curriculum, but as far as a committee, then I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, let's.
Who would be?
We do have a group right now that is working with Atlas, which is the software we're using to record curriculum. I don't know if that would be a place we want to start and then build out from there.
A lot of districts have curriculum councils made up of teachers, administrators and a board member or two. It's really broader than a piece of software.
So we can organize one that has not been in place, know who the board rep is to.
Well, I'd like to, but I don't know if I, I think I'd prefer to have someone else actually be the person on the committee and I'll go as I can.
Stan?
I can meet the data, but I can, I can be.
I'll be your alternate, how's that?
Okay. Motion for Stan?
I did.
Oh, Penny, second.
Second.
Seconded by Angie. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, that's that.
So we'll disband the policy subcommittee and just cover it as normal business.
We were looking at policies like two or three at a meeting to re-adopt them. So we probably should get back in that habit as well of relooking at policies.
Yeah, because this is a policy committee.
Yeah, that's our job.
Food service management contract.
Okay, so I just want to provide you with, with an update. The, the para educator contract having passed by the voters at the session, their second session in March. One of the pieces of information in that is that the food service workers would not be part of that collective bargaining agreement as of July 1st, 2016. So with that said, under the National School Lunch Program rules, the Bureau of Nutrition, that's really considered what they call a material change. So we are required to go out to bid, start the process all over again, just as what you had done, I think it was in 2013. And that meant issuing an RFP, sending it out to companies and talking, talking with them and doing a site review. So just to sort of come fast forward, I have already done that part, knowing that the document needed to be released, sooner the better. I have sent it out to, let's see. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. I have seven companies. Most of them are on the Eastern Seaboard in New England. One is in the Texas area. I don't know, they're looking to try and get into the New England area. But seven companies have been sent the document. And I have a target date of next Wednesday to do a site review with those companies. And the bid deadline is Monday, May 16th. I need to allow sufficient time, 45 to 60 days, for them to actually put together their documents and to ask me questions in writing, et cetera, issue any addendums. So when that time comes, you folks will all be getting a bunch of original bid packets. Plus I'll start to go in and do the, you know.
Can you repeat that deadline?
May 16th, Monday, May 16th.
That's the deadline for their bids?
Yes.
That's, that's quite a ways away for us to make a decision for.
Okay, but that's why I said, under the Bureau, you need 45 to 60 days once you send the document out. You've gotta give, this is a, you've got to demonstrate that you've given companies an opportunity enough to research your district, to come in and look at the equipment that they'll be using, to see what the current operations are, to look at your, your stats, your, you know, data, so. So that's where that's at, so May 16th.
Questions for Lori?
We will also need to forward to the PLRB a material change form, which Matt Upton will do for us along with the contract, because the food service workers will not, no longer be part of the union.
Did you have something, Mrs. Cardinal?
Forgive me if you said this, is the current food service company bidding to stay on?
Well, they have been sent the packet.
Okay.
You know, and, and the other thing is that, you know, your neighbors up the street are also looking for a food service company. Separate, you know, Middleton will be looking at something, so you never know that there may be some opportunities with each separate contract for economies of scaling. So, for example, I know that the Abbey Group and Chart Wells are interested in coming in and are serious about looking, so.
Did we see an RFP for what we want?
Did you see an RFP?
Yeah.
It's on the website. I run the RFP by the Bureau of Nutrition.
Where is it on the website?
Um, under the tabs, there's a tab all the way across, across on the right, it says RFPs. Just click on that tab and you'll see all of our bids that we currently have after right now.
Did we change any requests for the kind of food or nutrition? Did we look at?
Well, the RFP is a request for a proposal. So what you're saying is you have dietary requirements that the companies have to meet. And they will be asking for menu samples. I mean, they're sort of like the base requirements under the National School Lunch Program. Once they provide their, you know, proposals, then you'll have an opportunity to be asking some questions. I'm not gonna be looking for you to be making that decision on May 16th. I think I need to be doing the summary. And I'll have my questions, I'm certain, how they will handle certain things if it's not indicated in the proposal response, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Lori? Fuel bid.
Okay, we're all in right along here. Let me scroll through here.
Now, my pen doesn't work.
Yeah, I want to make some.
Alright, I got it. Nope, I got it.
If you want to take one and pass it to the left. Included in your packet is my preliminary introduction that we are going up to bid for heating oil. This is actually, we're jumping ahead just to see what we would have for pricing in the 16, 17 fiscal year.
Here, take this one, Joe, because I have mine on line.
You know, my memo, my introductory memo indicates the names of the companies in which I have sent the solicitations out. Irving Energy, Sprague Energy, D F R Shard, Down East Energy, Cardinal and Glidden, Dennis Burke and C N Brown. The responses, this is the kind of bid where you're looking at daily rates, so it's not something that you solicit the bid and say, okay, well, we'll get back to you in two weeks. It's, you have daily rates. So the memo that you've just been handed and was also put on the Google Docs and emailed to you this afternoon. Irving Energy and Dennis Burke submitted a bid. Sprague Energy chose not to bid. Rhymes also chose not to bid. We're actually considering rather a small account for them. So Irving Energy provided us with a fixed price of a dollar 619, fixed price per gallon. And also provided that same price for the town of Farmington. Dennis Burke only provided a fixed price for the school district at a dollar 7969, fixed per gallon. So we are recommending, I forwarded these documents to the town administrator. And so we're looking to, the school district is looking for you to approve for the low bidder.
A motion to accept Irving Energy as the energy provider for the school district.
Motion by Mrs. Moran, or a second?
A second for discussion.
Second for discussion, Mrs. Cardinal. Discussion.
Yeah, what's the RFP?
That's your, that's your tax, Mr. Petrie. That's a federal requirement. Basically, that's your less tax, leaking underground storage tank tax.
Okay, yeah, makes sense now.
You know, that's probably where all your brownfields money goes and gets funneled in.
But they don't.
Ever have, ever have an issue. Everyone by, by federal law is required to contribute to it regardless of what condition their tanks are in.
Mrs. Cardinal?
You see here, seven companies were, sent the request for bid and we got two back, obviously. One responded that we're too small, they didn't want to bid, so they acknowledged. Did the other four acknowledge the request? I'm just surprised.
Well, yeah, Sprague wrote a letter. Well, I, I am, I am yes and I'm not surprised. My role is to try and solicit as many prices as possible so that you get an idea of what's out there. I'm the one that sends it from my computer, so I have the read receipts. I know who receives them. I know that locally Cardinal and Glidden did. But I don't think that Cardinal and Glidden actually has the tankers to be able to come and do a 10,000 gallon tank. They, I don't really want to speak for a local business on why they didn't bid, but I sense that that may be the reason, maybe the reason why. Rhymes, he asked me several times, I want to bid, I want to bid. And I, I asked him, why didn't you bid after, but I've not received a response. So I do my best to, to try and get people to come forward, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I have a question related to electricity. When do we do that bid?
That is. Dr. Pfeiffer has liked me to get, working on that right away. And we've, we've been talking about, you know, where we are in the savings of all of that and any potential savings. Right now, we're using Eversource. We do have Constellation Energy. And I really have to double check as to when our contracts expire. But there are multiple companies that have come to me, or supplier companies that have come to me that have said, look, we'd like to have an opportunity to bid. So it's a matter of my pulling documents together.
As you're probably aware, Eversource is selling their generation. So maybe it's simply be a supplier.
My intention is to get a document out the beginning of April.
Okay.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Further discussion on the fuel bid?
And we could include the town if you so wish.
We have in the past, yeah, definitely. You've got a lot of buildings.
What are we paying now, do you know, off the top of your head?
On electricity?
Right.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to actually talk about that piece. Because there's so many different rates. I mean, you have your, your cost of, of product, then you have your cost of transfer. And you have your cost of demand. It's, it's not gonna be really as straightforward as doing oil. There's several, several pricing components that make up your overall fuel, electricity bill.
Any other discussion? A motion and a second. All those in favor of awarding the bid to Irving for, as presented?
Fixed price of a dollar 619.
Dollar 619. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? In unanimous.
And that's for all years, so it cannot go up.
Okay, reappointment of deputy treasurer.
Our motion that we appoint Mary Barron as deputy treasurer for the Farmington School District.
I'm checking.
Actually, whoops.
Oh, go ahead.
Mary Barron was elected as your treasurer.
Okay.
Okay, so under, under the statute, she as the treasurer can bring forward a candidate to you as the deputy. You might recall last spring, she brought forward Mrs. Jane Longchamp's. Simply because the treasurer has to supervise the deputy treasurer if that person ever has to step in. So that's why it's, it's done that way. So this, basically, this is kind of like a resolution and an old statement that explains what the law is and how it's tied to it, so.
And has that happened that the deputy has followed along and come and watched what Mary does?
We, yes, we, we did an orientation last year. It's really, you know, if, if the treasurer ever became ill or something or had to be out of town, we need to have somebody to come in and sign payroll checks, so.
So Jane Longchamp is the nomination?
Yes, so we're looking to continue with that.
Motion by Ms. Motion by Mrs. Moore, another second? Second by Mr. Frida. Any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let me send this around for us to sign.
Oh, thank you.
Accreditation update?
Just wanted to notify you, on March 8, 2016, we received the following communication from NEASA and CPSS Commission. The Committee on Public Secondary Schools, that is January 24, 25, meeting on 2016, voted that the Farmington School District be accepted as a candidate for accreditation for the calendar year 2018. Committee is pleased that school officials wish to participate in the accreditation process and committee staff looks forward to assisting the school in preparing to host a visiting committee no later than fall 2018. If you wish to be evaluated before fall 218, please contact me as soon as possible to discuss the year in which you wish to host a visiting committee. I think fall 2016 is a good time.
So that was based on the initial visit?
We submitted, right.
And then they went back and voted that we are candidate?
And we submitted a candidacy application to them and the commission votes on it and they meet four times a year.
Any questions for Dr. Pfeiffer on that? Comments? No? Okay, financials.
Just a short, one quick piece, we were looking for financials. That unified basketball team, and Shonda Tebow and Alex Satterfield did the Winnie Dip this past weekend. And won the prize for the most school spirit. And they all, but two team players go in and they, she wanted me to make sure and note that they submerged themselves. They did go all the way under the water. They paid more than $1,900. The president of the Special Olympics, New Hampshire, asked Shonda to come up and make a presentation because their, their group and their team had been noted as being really exemplary in terms of the way they, they worked as a unified group. So I wanted to make sure and mention that and say thank you so much to Alex and Shonda for making that all happen. And to the students as well, who participated in a really, really wonderful event. So thank you for letting me take that.
Thank you.
Adam Sexton didn't sue, I gotta talk to him about that.
Did you have anything in particular that you wanted to point out, talk about?
No, not, not really. Simply because we, we just go over financials and our administrative meetings. We talk about the details of things and what administrators are doing and what their planning is for the remainder of the year, so. I really don't have, have anything.
Nothing struck me as.
The, yeah. Account 22. Don't look like that appropriate story.
Fund 22?
Yep.
Are you in all funds?
You're in grants.
I'm in revenue, grant.
Okay.
Have new grants?
Fruit and vegetable.
Oh, we do take that in. It may just be where it's being posted.
It says amount remaining is what we had to start with, so. What's going on there?
We just didn't record the actual budget. Do you notice that the adopted budget columns and the revised budget columns are zero? So, there's nothing to, to say, okay, what's your fruit and vegetable budget actually going to be? I don't have the exact numbers, but it is in the food service database. And I think between the two schools. I'm going off of memory here, and I really don't want to do that, but we're about $30,000 a year on the fruits and vegetables program. So what we do is, is we receive all the slips, we receive the detail, we go through it, check against the calendar, who did what for work. It gets right down to, get down to pounds and bushels. And then all of that gets put into spreadsheets and is submitted to Department Bureau of Nutrition for reimbursement.
Is it worth it?
Very much so. It's very much so. You know, that will be something that'll come out to play in this bid. How well, or how do companies handle running the fresh fruit vegetable program? Is it going to be responsible for doing that?
And that was part of the bid?
Yes, that's definitely, that's, that's our program. We as a district signed on for it. It gives, it gives students a great opportunity to get some, some good nutritious fresh fruits and vegetables. Get introduced to things that they've not eaten before.
The budget committee had one question about our waste removal fees. And it's over at Henry Wilson largely because we remove chemicals this year. You're required to do that and to store them appropriately, so we are over. We'll have to do a fund transfer to bring that to zero.
What kind of chemicals are we getting rid of?
Cleaning supplies.
You know, there's an age standard for chemicals that are used in sciences and things like that. That's why there's most there. There are occasional some cleaning materials or fluids that we may have had around for a while. And they're, they got rid of those too.
What's the, what is the process? Do you have to, do you have to bring in a special, some kind of a special bin, or how does that work?
When you're really not entirely certain what, what it is, especially if it's from a science lab. You really do need to bring in like a company that knows and properly removes it. And we receive a certificate, because basically it's hazardous material, it's changing title, so to speak. And so we receive like a manifest that says, look, you know, we've taken this and we've, we've taken it and disposed it on your behalf. So I mean, that's something that our facilities director, he worked with the fire department on that and, and something that did have to be addressed. So, it was about $608 that we had to cover for that. What we're now doing is we're doing an assessment every spring. And just taking a look and saying, okay, well, what does need to be removed from our building? What, you know, do it in the spring prior to the fire department coming in and doing your, your start of school, you know, opening assessment and evaluations.
That maple syrup's a deadly mixture. It can be, I guess.
Any specific?
I think it was part of the pancake breakfast, but I'm not sure.
Any specific questions for Lori?
Good to be there.
Did we settle at 21st Century Title IV issue that we were?
We have a meeting this week. We have had a discussion with some people at the state level, expressed some concerns. I am still looking, property liability trust is looking for a certificate of insurance. And I've still not received it yet from the group.
We had a question at our last meeting about Middleton students and tuition rates. Since we're on financials, do we have that number yet?
Actually, well, yes, we, yeah, we do. It's actually very.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's incredibly, what am I thinking? I think it's $11,215.
That's our rate?
Let me pull it up off my computer.
Do we know how that compares?
Pretty much compares with what they would be paying the other district.
You gonna pull that up?
Let me get on the, on my sticky notes here.
I got, you're gonna remember the last, last meeting we had? And the reason why we went with this farm out here in the quadrangle. Is they had a lot of food that was being wasted and we could use that as compost for, for that, if you remember.
Yeah, for the senior.
Community garden.
Yeah.
Community garden. So, you know, for throwing that much food away, then we need to be paying more attention, I guess, or something's not, something's not. We need to done properly, I guess.
Yeah, unfortunately, and I know you know this, Joe, you have to take what is considered a meal, whether you want it all or not.
Well, it's, but it's off versus served, so they would have to take it. They have to take most of it, but.
Right. I think for, I think it's.
So, the tuition rate, I was close, $11,205.
$11,205?
And theirs is $11,211?
Something like that, yeah.
Oh my God, $6.
I know, it's principal, but I'll motion that we stay with our rate.
Well, that's what we.
We're gonna do that now?
Didn't they ask for the?
They did ask for the other rate. Don't, don't suck in my motion.
Be accommodating.
Is that, is that something we want to vote on right now?
No, I don't think we have to.
It was brought up in non-public.
Was it?
Yeah.
We do have two students that we need to inform one way or the other.
Well, we should have the students.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, if we're gonna make a motion on that, we'll do it non-public, in case there's any conversation that comes up.
Well, the conversation can happen in non-public, the motion has to happen in public.
Well, that's fine.
Come out and do it.
Alright, I rescind my motion.
Any other, okay, so any other further questions, financials?
I do have some financials questions, but I'm not sure if it's just because I'm new and it's whatever, and you're all familiar.
Alright.
If we open where you are, so. Anytime, you're welcome to call if you have questions, call or come in.
Okay, should I do that and just individually and then if I think it's a concern?
We might have the same question, you know.
Okay, for the telephone usage on the general fund lines four, 504 through 506. It seems to be quite a spike at Henry Wilson. Has anyone looked into that? Is that normal?
Okay, that's something that I've also had on my, on my table. I have done one evaluation with Bay Ring, who's come in and has taken a look at what, what our costs are. I just still have to disseminate that information. And then there's some, several other companies out there that are willing to come in here and do some things. Right up, right, I realize we're talking about Farmington right now, but right out of the gate, Bay Ring feels that they can save some money on the SAU office on the telephones. So the sooner that I can get that in and get that working. So, yes, there is a spike. Yes, we're looking at trying to shave off any unnecessary, unnecessary costs. You can't, you know, you can't avoid the taxes, but it's also the cost per line. And that's where we need to get some competitive pricing. They don't make money off of interstate and interstate, you know, but those are pennies on those types of calls. It's what the cost per line is.
Just, just note that the, the adopted budget for Henry Wilson is larger, so we must have more need there if we budgeted it to begin with. It might have something to do with that.
Okay, and then, I'm not sure if this can be, if there's information that needs to be non-public regarding to this, but lines 531 and 533, we've over expended, in my opinion, quite a bit on subs custodial salaries? Does that mean substitute custodians?
Yes.
And overtime for custodians, is that normal? I mean.
As far as the budget, $4,000, but we've spent 17.
Or is that somehow compensated on another?
Well, what we're doing is we have to bring in a substitute to be able to still clean the buildings if someone is, is absent or someone is on vacation. There have been quite a, quite a gap in placements and vacancies that we had. So, for example, if you, if you look at line 530, you've got $10,500 still remaining at the high school level. So what we do is we need to take whoever's substitute who's not been, you know, brought permanently onto the payroll, but someone is filling in for someone else, we're costing that and charging it just to that substitute line. Yes, our druthers are to reduce, you know, absenteeism and have people, you know, not having to.
Okay, so if you were to just net.
It is somewhat of a wash, so.
If you were to net all of those salary lines?
Right.
Okay.
Overtime is being called in for, you know, a weekend event. Someone needs to cover for an event or if the alarm goes off after hours. And you have to send somebody in to, to, you know, secure the building. Security is, if the building's not secure, but, so, that drives those costs.
But doesn't that typically get answered by the facilities manager? Those calls?
Yes, yes, he does, and he does not receive additional compensation for it. But if he's not available, I'm just giving a couple of different scenarios, it's not an all the time thing. But Mr. Gordon definitely is here late at night and definitely on Saturdays and Sundays. But sometimes he has to send someone in to check on the buildings.
And then, there's a whole section, transportation, recreation and other, what is sort of, it's really activity goes there.
It's not budgeted fully, but that is the FAMI program. FAMI receives a bill from our transportation coordinator. And actually, that is on the, the monies that we receive are a revenue, a general fund revenue. Money revenue report. Under transportation, it's probably in the middle of the page, transportation other sources. You'll notice, we received $9,109 so far.
Okay. Thank you.
So definitely, if you've got, if you've got questions, feel free to drop me an email or.
Oh, we, there was an issue over family income, right, because of our liability?
Right, yes, we just touched on that.
Without them having liability.
Without them having liability.
They're having a meeting this week. That's the meeting she was referring to.
Okay, alright, I just didn't catch it.
Anything else for Lori, financials? Okay, we're back to public participation?
Did we want to do new business?
Oh, new business, I'm sorry, sorry.
Sorry, I had, I had at least one new business. Typically, biannually, we spray for mosquitoes, and I know that's probably a Larry question. I just want to put it on the radar that that's something that we typically do by, and I'm not sure if it's due this year or, or not.
What's the question?
Mosquitoes and ticks, we usually spray the fields to.
I know that he has been talking with a licensed company and has been looking at some competitive pricing. I don't think he's ready to do that just yet, because at one point it was beautiful out, no one was doing that. But I know that he's looking at competitive pricing.
Okay, that was what I had for, for new business.
Well, it's a good point, you know, I, I think we, I'd kind of like to start getting back into the habit of having Mr. Gordon give a monthly report. Similar to the principals, I don't know if the school board has any objection to that. But it's, you know, to position, there's just so many things that fall under his authority. But it would be nice to just sort of get updated on projects and things that are going on.
Yeah, he would be ready, he's definitely ready to do that, he's asked, and that's good to know that the board's interested.
Stan, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention that I sent everybody an email about the webinar on competency-based education on April 20th from three to four. And since we're, we're going to competency-based education as a state, I just would recommend that, you know, we all attend if we can, if we're available. Susan Patrick and Chris Turges are both really leaders in competency-based education from, from our point of view. So, it might be, it might be good if you don't understand it or you're looking to understand a little bit more about it, it might be a good thing to attend.
You sent us that today, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And this would be very helpful if everybody got to go and do this training, because it really gives you some valuable information. You get a book out of the deal.
I was trying, but it won't.
You can't push that button?
I can't push the button, it won't, it won't, it'll be registered.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I, I strongly recommend it, because it kind of gives you the do's and don'ts of, of being a board member and what the expectations are and some of the laws that you might need.
If you would like us to register you, please let us know, we'd be glad to do that.
One in Whitefield's a little far.
Good drive though. That's the one that's, maybe.
Anything else before we go to public, public participation?
Announce our next meeting. We used to do that, we don't do that. Sorry.
Stan, you said the state was going competency-based. Is that going to be a requirement for every district? Or you're just, were you speaking of a trend? Um, no, it's, it's actually in the school approval standards that we, that we should be moving in successive years towards happening.
be moving in successive years towards competency-based education, in the high school, then in the middle school, then the elevators.
So at some point, we're going to be forced to do it, whether we want to or not?
Parents...
You want to look at it as being forced, yes, it's actually, it's actually a very popular trend in education, so I think it's a best practice, not necessarily forced. Yes.
We won't have a choice, that means we're being forced.
Well, no.
We should be doing that anyway, because we're teaching how to, people, the students...
I understand your opinion, I just wasn't...
Mr. Chair, remember, parents have the ultimate fundamental right to control the process of their education and the upbringing of their children, period. That's a U.S. Supreme Court decision on many occasions. So, you're the ones that control that, to parents, through us. So if you don't like it, please let us know, or if you want to understand more about it, let us know.
Well, leading into my next question...
There's a webinar on April 20th, if you want to understand.
Well, that was my next question, is that webinar for educators only, or is it open to everybody?
It's open to anybody, it can do a link.
All right, I want to get that, okay. And how are we doing on getting those non-public meetings posted online? It was a vote at the last meeting.
The non-public minutes?
Yeah.
When we approve them? Well, we approved some tonight, so those should be going on right away.
Was that, so that's only going forward, that's not historical, non-public minutes?
Oh, I didn't understand.
I, I don't think, I don't think we planned on...
My understanding, previously, you did not post non-public?
Correct.
Well, we, once they're approved, they're, they're public minutes.
Right, but they weren't posted until we voted at the last meeting.
Right, exactly.
And I, I thought that that intention was from this point on.
Right, and that's what I thought, too.
I'm for that. Shall I make a motion?
Well, it was already voted on.
Okay.
So we've got, we've got some...
It wasn't specified one way or the other, I, so I, I guess, I assumed it would be historical, because I thought that they would, on your Google Drives or whatever, that you have, and it was a matter of flipping a switch.
I don't know the process.
It's not a matter of flipping a switch, but it's, it's easy enough to do, I think we can probably...
Well, I would encourage...
Can't do it tomorrow, but we can probably put it in the plan to...
I would encourage you to consider that.
Unless, unless you have to be careful, if they're sealed, then you can.
Yeah, right.
Oh, sealed.
Steve, I just sent you the link.
Oh, thank you. I would encourage you to consider putting up the historical ones as well.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Anyone else in the public? Mrs. Torioso?
You gotta be professional at saying her name. I know, he says it right every time, I'm impressed.
And I'm, I'm eventually gonna learn how to spell it.
It's all those basketball games, I had to say it for the boys. My, I just had a question about the insurance with the teachers, how are those negotiations going? I know that that was still in question as far as the budget and... I think we're discussing that in non-public after.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not an issue for public.
Oh. It hasn't moved. Okay. If, if that's the, it hasn't moved as, unless there's news at, in non-public. Okay, so then, if we go with what Mr. Henry said, you'll discuss it non-public, and it won't be available to the public? Until we approve, until we approve the draft. Until you approve of minutes, and then it won't, and then it's going to take, so... Well, technically, you, just because they're not online, you can go to the SAU office up to 72 hours after our meeting and request those minutes, as long as they're not sealed. They may not be on the website, but you can get them, providing she types fast. Okay, that's it.
Well, just point of clarification, shouldn't we also be able to email and have them email to you?
I think as long as you request them.
Right, as long as you request them, you can, so you can request by email, I think.
That's a, that's a non-meeting status, too, because that's negotiation, so you may not get the answer you want.
That's right. The only answer is no, if you don't ask the question.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. Now, abstaining, a motion going non-public?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore, under RSA 91A, colon, 32, A, B, and C, resignations and nominations dive a second. Mr. Frida, I am actually going to do a roll call vote on this, I, we don't usually do it, and, well, but when, but when we...
Oh, you want to...
I want to do a roll call vote, so roll, Mr. Frida. Mrs. Cardinal?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, to go into non-public?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Petriot? Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you, folks, for coming. Our next meeting is April 4th, I believe, at 6:30 right here. Thank you for those of you that tuned in from home.